Thanks to Commissioner Lisa Lester for coordinating this opportunity. And I wrote to Superintendent Ron Dilbeck. Ron, you got anything for the crowd before we turn them loose? Talk about these projects?
Glad to be here. I mean, I'm not trying to answer a few questions, but this man's especially right here. He's been on a while.
Well, we appreciate the interest. We're here to serve you. So Steve, floor here.
All right. Well, it's a pleasure to be here. Glad everybody's here. We're going to kind of be informal, talking to residents. We did have, I think we ran out of handouts. We kind of guessed how many people would be here. We can send you any information that you need on this. We kind of put the handouts together to have something to go home with you. So we don't just have, we talk about it and you get back home, you'll have something to reference. I'm, Mayor and I were talking about, I'm a paper person. I keep everything. We're talking about being a pack rat. So I like paper still. But we're going to go through some of the projects. I know one of the big interests was 63 and 63 corridor for a lot of us. You know, those are several projects that we're, they're a long time coming and we're very close to getting a lot of those. And you'll start seeing some progress on those as we go through, walk through them. They're really good projects. We're excited because we're going to have several of them under contract in the next couple of years on the corridor. So I'm going to let Dexter, he's my project development director for Region One. And we'll go through those projects and we can go through any other things that you might want to ask. We've got a list of other projects besides 63 as well that we can talk about. I've got our servicing list. We'll talk about what roads are going to be paved. Anything that you all like, we'll do our best to answer. And if there's any issues that you need to bring to us, that you need us to look at, same thing. You know, when we go around, the best people for us to get information from, you know, is the folks that live in the community. If you come to Corrigan, Tennessee, where I live, I can tell you everything about it, right? When you live in a community, you work in a community, and that's your passion, you know, we depend greatly on input from you guys. I get calls all the time, hey guy, I've got a problem on a road. It could be from a commissioner, or it could be from a mayor, or whoever. And they say, hey, can you look at it? And you all give us great input. So we'll do that as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Dexter as he walks us through some of these projects. And you got any questions, you raise your hand and we'll go over to him.
Yeah, I'll reiterate. Sorry, we don't have no handouts. If anybody's interested in getting one, it'd be an electronic message. Send it afterwards. I've got cards. I'll get you my email address and get you this information. We're going to jump in, straight into it. I know one of the main reasons we're here is to talk about State Route 63 and the corridors as a whole, mainly from here in Lafollic to Harriet, to Clayburn County. As you can see on the map, if you just have the Campbell County, it still shows all five projects. It's really six. Five projects that get you from Lafollic to Harriet. Campbell County will outline the projects in Campbell County. You can still see the colors on the Campbell County map in blue. And that's why I am up here. As you'll notice, in the, on the map, there's a section of State Route 63 right there into Harriet, Campbell County, close to Lafollic, that is in red. There's two boxes that are in red. That will tell you the limits of that project. The first one is from Lafollic, Lafollic Urban Fountain to Frontier Road slash Woods and Lane. So that'll be the first project we go to construction. That's what we're going to install. We've had a little bit of right-of-way stuff, we know. And that's some current damage. A little bit of right-of-way, kind of purchase. A little bit of property and some maintenance. So you should be able to see that job on the ground back in the quarter of this year. But the big lead back in the quarter is used for construction. Colors kind of hard to differentiate. Going a little more east, you know, I call it purple color. My wife said it kind of colored. Maybe y'all see it different. That next section is from Frontier Road, Woods and Lane, to Clayburn County line. And both of these jobs are red, purple, and green. Next one over in to Clayburn County. We were taking the two-lane section and expanding it to a five-lane section. That is kind of perfect.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you back here.
Sorry about that.
That microphone may work for you behind you there.
We can come up.
Can you hear me? Is that out?
That's out, yes.
Perfect. Sorry about that. Can you hear me good?
You'll have to talk right into it.
Yeah, I'll get over here. I'm making sure I got it right. So you can see the purple section there. Like I say, the red, the purples, and the green sections over in Clayburn County will be expanding from a two-lane highway as it is now to a five-lane road. That purple section, the next milestone, we're still preliminary engineering. Our next milestone is moving into the right-of-way phase there. And anticipated letting in first quarter of 2021. So we're still a couple of years away from turning third on that project. Okay. And as we move east into Clayburn County, the green section is also in preliminary engineering phase. The next milestone is moving into right-of-way with an anticipated letting in fourth quarter of 2020. So the green phase and the blue, the purple phase will be very close in timing. We anticipate the green phase going just a few months before the purple phase. Currently, we do not have a project going for the blue section in Clayburn County. As you see it, we will widen it from a two-lane to a three-lane in future projects. But currently we're not working on that. We'll probably do it in a day job. It's not as, shouldn't involve right-of-way. We have enough right-of-way there. So we might pull that off. We'll leave the pink section as you move closer to Harriet. That project is moving along quickly. We anticipate letting it this summer, 2029 days. We'll be working both ends of this corridor this year. That project is also going from a two-lane to a three-lane section. And that involves modifications to the intersection there, State Route 32, and State Route 63. That gets you the timing that we anticipate on the corridor as a whole. I'd love to also point out in Campbell County, as you can see there on the yellow side, closer to the stop, Campbell County, we have State Route 63 highlighted in yellow. There's a small blue section there that has two blue boxes to go along with it as well. Where our developing a truck line, like the section with an intersection modification there. That job's still in preliminary engineering phase. Right-of-way is anticipated in second quarter of this year. So the next four months probably. And we anticipate letting late 2020. So that's all the projects that we have in Campbell, Clayburn County on State Route 63. If I have any questions about those contractors, leave that.
Dexter, just one more time from Lafollic to the purple line. Can you cover that project again?
Get in that mic a little more.
Get in that mic a little more.
Yeah.
Good deal. So the red section is the first section. We will go to construction with Campbell County. It's anticipated in the third quarter of 2019. So I would say about, we'll let it by October. Should see construction out there by the end of the year. Contractor should be on the ground.
The purple is 2020. Is that going to be four lanes?
Five. And a five-lane section.
Yeah. It's a five-lane section, two three lanes, and it's their purple.
So the five sections, the first three going from Lafollic toward Harriet will be five-lane section. So the red, the purple, and the green section. The blue and the pink in Clayburn County will be three-lane sections.
And your right-of-way is coordinated in the red, but it's not yet coordinated for the purple?
The right-of-way in red, we are in the process of purchasing that. That's the last thing we have to tie up before we go to the way. So we're in the process of getting that work completed. Those are the right-of-way in this, in this section. We already owned it. We purchased it, built a five-lane. If there are some construction easements, we'll have to buy out.
And the red is up through Frontier Market or Lee's Market.
Woods and Lane.
Woods and Lane.
Great.
Is that, on those notes you're saying, does the funding, is that pretty much that you got it through the Housing Improvement Act and the funding is actually going to be there and is appropriated probably right now at this time?
What that means is we work on a three-year work program. The money is there. These jobs have been identified in the, in the improvement act to be built. So they will have to be built. Because they are apparently in our three-year work plan, which means, assuming none of that changes, we will be building.
The first year of our three-year plan actually has, we go to, we're required to present a three-year plan to the legislature for all of our legislative projects, which these are included in it. The first year, year one of the legislative three-year plan is actually funded. The next two are the, the out-years don't have money attached to. You know, we're a pay-as-you-go state. So we, we don't borrow any of our infrastructure, which is a good thing. But it's also the reason why you'll see a segment like this broke up into smaller bite sizes, which we can handle financially. Many of you are in government, so you understand when your, do your budgets on your local level, same way for us. But the first year is budgeted, the red one would be budgeted in last year's three-year plan. Is that right? Am I saying that right?
The current year's.
The current year's three-year plan, yes. We will be issuing a new three-year plan that will pick up from there for the next three years. Sometime, I guess April, May is when it'll come out. Some of, any of them that are beyond this year, when this has been funded, is probably setting in a year to be funded. But until we get to that year, we don't actually allocate funds. That's so we're not sitting there with money in a, tied up in a project and inflation eating that. What we try to do is spend all our money in each current year. The other reason why is when you see these different phases on projects, we phase in basically three phases. And that's another reason why we'll do about 10% of it. It'll be the environmental preliminary engineering phase. And then typically, right-of-way is about 15%. These are lower because we own most of the right-of-way. But typically, on the geography, 50%. Until we get ready to complete the first phase, we don't want to allocate funds to sit in an account for three or four years and not be used. We want to get everything out on the street so the communities can benefit from when they get there. So when we get ready to go to that next phase, then we fund the right-of-way phase. And usually, about 75% of the project cost is in the construction phase. That's most of it. And then we'll typically, once we get done with that phase, the right-of-way phase, we'll put that next year or two, and then we'll put that construction letting on there. And that's when we can let it to contract. When Dexter's talking about letting it to contract, that means that later this year, Octoberish, that project will go in to contract for being. The other one on the other end, Harriet, the one at the very end of 63, it'll leave one this year's way. So you'll have two pieces under a contract, and then we'll begin to work systematically with the others. As the right-of-way is completed, then we'll start the construction thing. Does that help you?
Yeah, yeah. When you're working it for somebody, we do it.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. That's the reason I was talking to you. Yeah, y'all did the same thing.
We do the same thing.
So these are, these are projects that are future years and subject to funding are, which is the green and purple are, we're in year three of the current plan.
How long will it take to build them?
Well, I'm working in Campbell County, so I'm more concerned about Campbell County.
Yeah.
But what's the completion time on those first two sections, Campbell, you know, the red, the purple up there?
So if you let red to construction this year, I would assume it'll be what, 32, 36 minutes? Probably around 36 minutes. You take about three years of construction. That includes any utility work, anything else that has to be done with that. It may be a little bit less than that. They're not really, I haven't looked at all of your studies. Our construction folks will do the analysis of that. I'm going to get all of the right-of-ways.
Of course.
Yeah. I think everything is, and I think it's outside my footprint. If it is, then it may go down a little bit.
I got a question about the red light on Millsboro Island and 63. This is going to be a wireless project. Your own consumer will rely on it to keep the maintenance and repairs. It's going to rely on the county to provide the maintenance and repairs.
We don't, we will put a new red light. We have signalization in and all that, but under, we don't maintain any signalization. It's all local.
But it's not, is it going to be on the right-of-way?
It, it, all, well, all signalization.
So it's with the safety, safety grounds?
Right. It goes back to the, we don't, as a department in the state of Tennessee, different DLTs around the country are different. We don't maintain any signalization.
I didn't notice it's going to concern maintenance. The right-of-way on red light on my.
Okay. To concur with Ron here, I represent Second District, from Lafollic all the way almost to Campbell County. Now, we've got some residents in here that is concerned. Of course, how many red lights will you?
Probably three on this corridor, I think, in red. Am I right, Dexter?
I think that's right.
I think that's right. Where Davis Chapel comes in, it actually turns into a different road name when it's right there. There's a, there's signalization that will be there on this project.
And that's signal, pardon. Is that red light?
Yes, that's a red light. Red light, red light. Why I say signal.
Sometimes signals to me is just a flashing caution light.
No, 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 no. Signalization's the full, the full, caution light will come. It's full signalization at that, at that intersection.
The one at the, that you referenced just a second ago, was the road name?
Oh, Millsboro Island.
Yeah. That, that intersection's being realigned.
And we'll put a new signal there.
For a five-lane. Yes. Yeah. Then we have signal goes in there.
And they have signal there.
We have one other location.
Meyer's Lane.
Same case.
Are you talking about on the old road, about the school on Lake Springs Road?
Is it, is there an elementary or a middle school right to there?
Yes.
It seems like the doors not stay high.
I'll see if I can.
Cross Valley Road.
No.
That's, that's my third one.
Okay. There'll be signal, there'll be that signal there. And then the other two we talked about.
That's actually, you should see it.
Yeah.
To add to my question, we have some residents in here also, you know, that live in the Second District. Dexter, is, now, when you expand out, you go along with Campbell County project, are you going to have plenty of room to come out without getting into the residents' properties? It's how you need to explain, because there's a lot of them here for that.
Every, every property is unique. I'll start with that. But in general, we have a, enough right-of-way to build a five-lane section already.
Yes. Back in the sixties, now as young man, I worked for, I actually worked for Chalk Ride. Sixties, I built a full line. And he builds his showroom and parks on T-Yards right-of-way. But he had to come back and turn it down, move it. This is back in the sixties. T-Yard is buying up property. He did extend that road all the way to Hurry.
Yes. Yeah. So we own most of it, but like Dexter said, there may be some small construction easements, slope easement, or something like that that we may have to purchase in. You place, by and large, most of this corridor, everything we've done, what we already own.
You know about where that is at at this point, Dexter, where you're at on that part yet? Because I know that there's some citizens in here that.
On the red section, we are in right-of-way currently. We will be talking to those folks probably in the next couple of months.
What is the total right-of-way?
Yeah.
You know how many?
It depends on the.
How wide it is.
How wide?
You've got to say.
I think one of them, trying to get at the section, that's right outside of the C. Lafollic limits.
Yeah.
On the right-hand side, going toward Harriet. I think that one's going to be there.
So.
Hundred fifty yards of the property.
That's like mirrors. So some of the locations where right-of-way may be impacted, where in general, like I said, to build the actual five-lane road, we have enough width. But there are some intersections where we are realigning the intersection, and that will be full right-of-way. If we impact property where that's being realigned, that property could be, or definitely will be, a, a take. If you have to purchase some property in some, maybe a portion of property, it may be a whole property.
That's one of the bigger issues at this point that we're dealing with, you know?
Yep.
Yeah. And we, you know, we won't, we'll be coming and talking with folks once we get to that point, which we're near, we should, very close, and start sitting down with people and going over sets of plans and looking at what type of impact there is.
I represent the, represent Clayburn County in the Seventh District.
Okay.
And.
Which is the Seventh District?
It's the one, like where the high school is, Cumberland High School, it's in that area.
Yes, close to 32.
Right.
Yes.
And the people in my area feel like we need a red light there at Harmon Road at Tuttles, where the kids turn in and out from the high school.
On 32?
It's on 63.
Right there, right there when you crossed over the bridge there.
They've put in all sorts of apartments back in there, and the students, the medical school students come out without really stopping very much. And kids are coming in, and apparently there's been some wrecks or near wrecks. Is there a red light for us?
Apparently there is not a red light.
We'll look at, I'll look at the study. I know there's also some other things going on. I know LMU is redoing their campus, and they're changing their access point up there too, for the main campus. They're moving it onto 63.
Right.
And I've met with them as well. There's going to be modifications to their area and also a little bit in our job project as well to accommodate that, because they're going to change the pattern of the way their students come in and out. It looks like a lot of that's going to feed off of 63 right there at that intersection, rather than, I know right now that a lot of them come out on 32.
But you'll look at it?
Yes. We'll make a note and look at that.
While we're on the schools, Campbell County, I still, if you're familiar with Campbell County, it's not on this project field.
Correct.
But I've been a commissioner, this is my 13th year, and there's a few others that are, Witz been here for third or something. And that's been brought up numerous times about the red light access to the high schools. And I know the Justice Delory does studies. I think we've asked for more studies to be done on different red lights. I think that's a struggle there also.
There's actually one in progress right now, which we know, we did the overhead flashing stuff at the school.
The high school.
At the high school. And we actually, I talked to my traffic department, and they're actually doing a current study there right now.
Right. Thank you.
The thing about it is, and we all have kids, and I hear this every day, I heard it, 30 minutes before I came down here, make sure you mention the red light on the high school. And they built the bridge and did a good job on the bridge. But there's actually, when you come out of the high school, and the gentleman called me, he said, when you come out of the high school, and we've all been, lives in Campbell County, this team out, it's kind of crunk now since the bridge has changed. And the students cannot see what lane they're actually getting into going back west toward Jacksboro, Harriet. And we would like to see turning out hours that will turn you in the right direction. It leads out like most intersections.
Got to track and go through the intersection.
Right. Because when they get up there, they're actually shooting into a slow lane, and they're missing. And with the curve in the bridge and the curve coming from the other end, they're silent. Mine too, I'm getting older, is actually, it's, it terrors you, because you think they're going slower, and you find out they're going a lot faster. Zach just, just graduated last year, and it's a problem. But we at least like to see, hopefully, and I know every time you put a red light in, it does something downstream or upstream. But if we had something that would kick on, like when these kids goes out during the middle of the day, and they leave for college, they got college spices, they got to work. It's a dangerous time of the day. And that's really the only time that the red light, unless there's a ballgame going on, and it could work that way, I don't know. But it would act, when you came through from the high school coming out to hit forward, it would trick that light and just stop the traffic from letting kids out. Have they been in town? Not as I know of, but it's done. And the first in any way possible, and I'm speaking not only to myself, every commissioner sitting here and ever, ever perps, parents sitting in this room for Campbell County. When your kids start driving, your breath is gone, because you know what time they leave. And when the, when the school traffic's going, you got the Sheriff's Department's doing the traffic control. When they shoot out during the day, that's the biggest time of the day. And if something's going to bad happen, I know we've been looking at studies from different areas, but please, on our behalf, request that there be something done.
We will, we're looking, he's studying now, and we'll do that. And you brought up the geometry, where the size distance, all that, we'll do that as well. They'll do all of that when they come.
Even if, you know, if we have those lanes, like the gentleman called me, that just actually let them out toward the west. Because, you know, going toward Lafollic, you can signalize, but you have to cross middle section, the turn of lane, and you're in the wrong lane. You're in the slow lane.
Yeah.
You just, and it's hard. I mean, you go in and out there a lot of times, and I still get crossed up. And.
Okay.
But please do, I mean, on behalf of the Campbell County and our, our kids, that's true, that's minimal.
I can concur with him too, because I've had several people ask about that red light as well. And two questions real quick, and I'll let Mayor Stanfield, you can talk to him on this, about the narrow at the Woods and Mile. Have you been approached with that yet? Do you want to, you know anything about that, maybe?
Well, eventually, Steve, eventually it's going to be a sidewalk all the way to Lafollic, all the way to Hurry's Pizza. And the sidewalk can, we know, there are a number of times.
Really important, Steve, it is. A lot of people complaining about it. We really need help with that.
Y'all been hearing, talking about, correction now, actually comes off the red light? You're talking about the protected left turn or?
Yeah, that's something simple you guys can jump onto pretty quick. Okay. Getting back to this, these red lights, as far as up the valley to the Second District and the First. Now, you're talking about, who's your first red light gonna be? And I know your middle or the red one.
Third one, Meyer's.
Okay, Meyer's. And then your middle light is probably going to be at Davis Chapel, and then your third one is where it's at now. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And then are you going to have, and then you going to have another before the Campbell County? Dexter?
I think that's it.
That's it.
Meyer's Lane, Wild Blue Circle, and Millsboro Road, and Millsboro Highway at Eagle.
And I just now got a constituent ask me, how soon maybe, Steve, do you think possibility that you might be able to work on the red lights, or does it all go in there? Does the phase?
It'll be part, it'll be part of the project. It'll be included, the red lights. The signal lights will be part of the project.
In the state, did you say 2001, somewhere like that?
No, this one will go, the red, the red one will be, it may be.
Okay, great.
It may not be done in 2001, 2000, or 2021, 2022. That's hard to say.
Yeah, it's very important for the Second and the First District, Campbell County's own, because they're all, a lot of the citizens are keeping up with this. So they're very concerned about it.
Let's go back to the school, Jaxborough Middle School. And we have requested in the past a red light there. And was told at the time, because we had one at Eagle Bluff Road, it didn't, we couldn't have one at Jaxborough Middle School. We have had accidents during school hours, and all we asked for was a red light to come on like at 7:30 in the morning, go off at 8:30. And the same thing, because we provide the.
Patrolman.
Patrolman.
Yeah.
To direct traffic. We have also had officers hit. So a red light would definitely help us. And as far as the children coming across the street, when school is out, or even when, when they're going up the morning, it's also a dangerous situation, even though the county has an officer there to help us most of the time. But we have to rely sometime on one person directing that traffic. So I would like for you to seriously consider a red light. We have caution lights up, but unfortunately, the speed limit when the caution lights are on is 25 miles an hour. Very seldom do you ever find any vehicle going 25 miles an hour during that school zone. Same thing between Jaxborough and Carville, the 45 mile an hour speed zone is not observed either.
Well, two, two that is, Mayor, that is, is a bad intersection, because we've had children come out, and by the time one officer gets one lane stopped on one side, one on the other, the children's trying to come across it. It's really a dangerous situation, because you have to go back like a patrol, the boys used to do, and ask for them to cross, and you've got two, three officers tied up, somebody trying to help the children all the way across the highway. And there does need to be something added there. I think that a lot would be a great asset for, and for the, for the safety. We've had several And for the, for the safety of them. We've had several accidents.
Excuse me?
Eagle Marp, go back across the street. And that's the mayor and city council of Jacksonville.
Steve, I hope that the concerns of the mayor back there has not left unnoticed, because when you're dealing with the children, the traffic, that attitude, that attitude unique, I hope you really take that into consideration.
While we're meeting west down that way, I'm Vicky Heatheron and I'm on the city council of Carroll. And 2014, we talked about the exit ramps, uh, at the 134 exit, northbound, southbound. And now that we have more of the northerners coming down with their boats in the summer, it's beginning to back up coming that way also. And also with the ATVs coming in now with all of the tourists that we have coming in, uh, there's a greater need now than it was in 2014. That study was done, the engineers did draw up plans at that time for eliminated plans. Of course, the money wasn't there at that time, but I talked to Steve Allen back the first of the year.
Steve's?
And, and Steve said that there is that improvement act that you're talking about, the I-75 Improvement Act.
We do, it's, it's part of the improvement act. We have, that, that interchange is included in the I-75 corridor, uh, project.
That's what he, do you know when that, how far down the road that may be?
It's a really large project. And like we talked about before, there'll be bite sizes of it. Obviously, we don't, you know, we typically don't have no photo project, it's $600 million or something like, we have to do pieces of it. I don't have a timetable because it's a new start, if I'm not mistaken, Dexter, so it'll.
It is still in the plan, I'm glad.
It is in the plan. I can't remember if we have any, if, if anything was said in the three-year plan last year for, uh, DE or not. I'm not sure, I'll have to check. The first thing will be the DE study.
Now that the ATVs are allowed to go on the State Route 63 down there, coming out in front of Shoney's, and when you come off of northbound coming southbound and you get off of that exit, it's very dangerous. Before the ATVs are much more so now with all that extra traffic coming in. You know, just for the safety of our, we haven't had a fatality or anything thus far, but it is backing up between 4:30, 5:30 back and off of the interstate coming, uh, from southbound to north.
I've got another thing that may, could be a possibility for interchanges. If we do have queuing on the interstate, there's a que program that we can do at times. It would be an interim measure until the, the full project would be done.
If there could be two lanes, there's room for two lanes already coming off there. If there could just be lined, it could be lined off for two lanes going right and then that one going left. I mean, there would be.
I'll, I'll actually bring my traffic guys up, thank them and them, and see if they can look if there's anything they, sometimes a lot, sometimes I can do if I'm focused, get this finer.
I think that would be an easy fix for now until they get the other part done. Coming from a northbound and southbound, that is very short. And when you get two RVs or two boats or three there, it's out into the interstate there.
Block, yeah. And that's one of the challenges in this region with upgrading that corridor along with other corridors on the interstate. You know, a lot of your rural sections of corridor were ruled back in, when we built, you look, I got my aerials of the whole state and when we built the interstate, it's amazing. I, I used to go to school sometimes and you'd be inside the city box office, inside, put up the, the, okay, you recognize this interchange? No. And I'd do the new one. It's, well, you're a turkey tree. But there's nothing but fields there. Obviously, a lot of these interchanges at the time that they were put in, obviously, they, they were sufficient for the growth that we had then. Now it's time to go back and, and that's made a lot of them. One, you know, 134, it's, it's one of those along with several along the I-75 corridor that need attention. You have growth, uh, you know. My, my previous director, he was here for 54 years, which is cool, a lot of y'all know him, uh, great guy. And, uh, he was here when they started building the interstate. He was part of that generation. And I remember him talking about sitting out at Cedar Bluff. Y'all been in the obstacle, seeing Cedar Bluff, what's like that? It's Cedar Bluff, it's staking an interchange. There's no interstate there. They were staking it out to build it. And he said, what idiot has put an interchange at this place? There's nobody using it. There's nothing but cows, chickens and fields. That's change. So we have to, you know, and it, you know, in, in transportation, you know, for us, you know, safeties are number one priority always. Uh, you know, and, and, you know, we, we work very hard. I mean, in, in my region alone, the traffic always give them problems. They did an amazing job. Nathan, if any of, any of you ever get to work with Nathan in this group, a lot of you local folks do, uh, we do more safety projects in this corner of the state than the rest of the state in the sense that we're very aggressive. We track every safety project that we do. A lot of those are smaller projects. We put in a turn lane somewhere, we put in, uh, some signal job. But we track, you know, J-turners, all kinds of different things. We track every single safety measure and we look how it was before and how it was after, to make sure we're doing a good job. And, you know, when you see those numbers, you see those safety numbers drop, uh, by 80 and 90% on accidents. And you know that you're saving people's lives. Because at the end of the day, uh, it's not a number, it's not a statistic, it's a person. So for us, we're very passionate about that.
One, one life, one life, you know.
Yes, it's completely that way. And so as we work through a lot of the projects we have, you know, for us, the feedback was great. I'm, I'm excited about it. I, I've been doing this for 20, 28 years. And, uh, the opportunity to see some of the projects that we've all sit with, you all of your community of 63, for everything, hey, well, we are gonna build this to be able to get to the point that we could build these down. To be able to go in and build a lot of the projects that I'm getting to do now with the additional funding is great because, you know, we, you know, I've had a lot of them that I had that were sitting there and we just couldn't get to that next step. Because at the end of the day, it's, it's the, the safety, uh, it's economic opportunity for a lot of folks, you know. Reality is the roads and the network we build helps with the economy as well, jobs, we're gonna need more jobs, we have taxes for the locals and everything. There's a whole effect that is there transformation. So, uh, all of these are very, very vital for the project.
I appreciate it. If you do, you know, take that back on it, see if you could do something temporary for the time being to that project if it's funded.
I got three.
So is it, is it too late to request a, like, the red light situation in the most current project towards Terry, didn't I think? Um, kind of where she's talking about wanting to kind of like a high school, because it is very dangerous.
It is not, it's not. And, and that's one of the things Dexter, I think, we'll go back and look at it and evaluate it. I mean, we'll, you know, obviously, you know, and that's one of the things that too can be a challenge for, for any of us in understanding that our projects, when we develop, it takes a long time. You know, we wish that we could, hey, we start a project today and in two years we got, they're very rare, there are a few, just for me, if you don't have any right of way, we have to deal with all the, you know, these have federal money and a lot of our application funds. Uh, and, and, and they're federal funding, so I have to go through all the environmental process. So what happens, does we start a project? These are, these have more age than that. But even in the best circumstances, if I have the funding clicking all the way through, here 80, 10 years. Well, what happens is, just like you're talking about, you have changes to conditions.
Yeah, I mean, there's significant population.
People, people move in, you add apartments, a school growth. I mean, LMU has, there is, it's, you know, uh, it's one of the schools myself considered going to when he was being recruited. And the, the growth at that school's amazing. I met with Dean back in the fall and just went through the campus and their master plan, knowing our project's coming, he's changing things, so I need to make changes to adapt. Because he's gonna have about 4,500 students on ground and he's continuing to grow that. In that, he's changing his campus layout, which is, his traffic's gonna be different. I've got to adapt to that. You build, you know, a lot of times we'll see new schools go in in counties between when we start in a project and when we finally get to, get near construction. So absolutely, it's not too late for us to look at that. Uh, we, we want to make sure that it, it is as up to date as possible. Okay, and a lot of times this kind of answers what we find out about. Yes, absolutely. Like I talked about before, you guys are the best people, just like I said, you come to Corriton, I can help you out with everything that's going on. There's not a lot that goes on in Corriton. You may know where Corriton's at. Okay, a few of you know it. Most people don't.
Got lost in a corn maze there one night.
Did you? Absolutely. That is a good corn maze over in Oaks. I went to school there. So I go to, so, side story, doesn't mean anything. I go, I go to University of Tennessee my freshman year and that's back when you had your, my, my mom and dad would write the check for what I had to pay. You had to go up there and pay it and, uh. It's not changing, hold on. Yeah, well, now you do all that stuff online. Yeah, it does. It costs a whole lot more. My son's in school right now. So, so I go up there and the lady looks at me and she goes, Corriton? So that's, where is that? Is that like northern Kentucky? No? It's in Tennessee. It's actually only about 30 to 5 minutes from here, but it's in Knox, it's in Knox County, barely, it's kind of right there. You need, you need minutes close. So, uh, so we have, yeah.
Everybody's talking about the red light, but has anybody thought about the reflective paint and the bad weather and stuff, especially at night, it just totally disappears? And you're trying to figure out what light area and what's coming at you.
On the, on the pavement?
Jacksboro, Carroll, all the way across.
We, we, you know, we do, we have standards when they put it down. There, there are some things out there that, over the years, we've experimented with. I did one years ago called the Gulf Line Project. And it actually took thermal plastic, made little grooves in it. They use it a whole lot in Florida. And so when you're driving down the road, the water's below that little groove and you can still see it. It's really great in Florida. Campbell County, the first time it snows and I drop a plow, it's all gone. One of the things that helps us in, when we upgrade the roadway is the reflective markers. Uh, that, you know, and the other thing that we've been doing as well on some areas is that, and I don't know if y'all know, some of our interstates, some of our routes now, it's called integrated friction cores. I can't use it everywhere, but it actually sucks the water down in the pavement and so, and it flows down underneath the surface. So you don't get the reflection. So you don't get the reflection and you can see, there's two things. It's unbelievable to crash that and we see that it reduces. Two things, you'll get, if you ever drive down the interstate and get the overspray correction, a downfall against it, it eliminates it, it goes away. The other thing it does is you can see the lines because instead of the water, what happens to you is that water, as it's running off the road, stands on top of the line. And then you, you're not able, those beams aren't able to pick up that, that headlight and pop it back at you. Uh, the, the O G F C sucks the water down so it's underneath the line so you can actually see the line there. We're always looking at new technology to try to improve that. When you get a lot of rain, a lot of typical pavement, whether it's on county road or whatever, it's hard to see or, it is very hard to see your stripes at times. Uh, and we, we have reflective standards and we actually test all of them. Everything that goes down, we test with a meter. Actually, I just bought a really big truck that can drive down, not me, somebody in my office can drive down the road, and, and actually test every, every linear mile. To make sure when they put it down, it has the right, that's one thing, to make sure it's the right standard. The other thing, when it does rain, it is a challenge, more so if you, if you got a lot of rain. We do.
And then we did the pavement all up the valleys. When it went through it, it's been on the sides, on the roads, they washed out some people's stripes.
What's that?
All up the valley, about a mile before you get to the paper plant. There's water there. I'll drop, it looks like it's got some trits.
After, give me your address on your smartphone.
Again, touching base on the old Highway 63. Dexter, do y'all see anything happening in the future that y'all might have to? I know that in the commission meeting one time, Mayor Morton noticed that we've had some people that came to me and was very concerned about that. Do you have anything you can talk about that?
On Highway 63, properties itself or an intersection or?
Well, I think the, the rest of you, we talked about red light, is that right?
Well, actually, Scott, that's in the road, oh, see, yes. We've asked for a study on that intersection for a red light.
It's good to bring it up while you're here.
Right, and I actually thought that was a state.
Talking about the intersection late spring.
Yes, old 63 in late spring, we did a razor, uh, railroad safety audit report in 12. Uh, we did some signing.
We wanted to see if it did get an octane.
Yes. And, uh, but it, it is a local street. We did some money, we did a bunch of signing and stuff.
Isn't that second answer, remember?
Yeah, second answer, yeah. I drove that, somebody talked to me about that. I came through a driveway about two months ago.
I don't think it's a lot of time.
Yeah.
Is it possible you can look into it again or?
Yeah, I mean, you've got it on this list and you're gonna actually ask the question.
We really appreciate that because we have some citizens that's been really asking about that as well.
I have a question. A period coming into Tazle, down to 345 intersection there, they're gonna do, I think you said something about we could ask about some asphalt in there. I think we're scheduled for some overlay in there, a milling overlay. You know anything about that, or timeframe on that?
You also, you have the Campbell County map.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, so it's a green dot there, right? Is that what you're saying? That's what you're talking about, right? Green dot on the map, the green boxes we have on the project there, we'll be putting in an interchange, exit ramps and a whole lot of yards to tie 345 into say around 32.
Yeah, from 345 interchange to the top of the hill there, you come into Tazle, that's scheduled for some overlay, uh, milling overlay. I didn't know if you got a date on that.
Is that around Wells Lane? Is that near Wells Lane?
Uh, yeah, Wells Lane is off the backside of there.
Okay, there's a section there that's mile marker 12 to Wells Lane is gonna be left contract this year to be paid. Stay around 32. Stay around 32.
Steve, can we talk a little bit about I-75?
Which section?
Well, uh, you know, you can, you can leave the scales in Kentucky up there in London and drive on in, go to Knoxville and hang a left and go out through North Carolina and you're never waiting. And.
The weigh station?
Yes. Uh, I know the new specification for a weigh station, what used to serve us is not big enough. County Anderson County line, but we've got an exit Jellico that's about two miles long.
Yeah, and I will tell you something we have to, it, it, it's a model that is going to continue maybe possibly where we can. We've been working with Department of Safety. Uh, this last year, I guess it's in, in Green County. We utilize, we actually utilize the, uh, the, uh, rest areas where they're able to, and they put in their portable scales, we work with them to put together traffic controls. And they do periodic, they try to catch, you do it a few times and then people start saying, hey, we need to be careful. They go in, do a complete inspection of the trucks and then they do the portable scales as well. Uh, we've worked with them, did some modifications there at the, uh, at the, those are opportunities that owe us and the Department of Safety both to work together to try to look at other places we can do that. We know that we have places that we have vulnerability for that, you know. And the truck traffic, you know, and I don't know if the statistic, but probably about 10 years ago, the weigh scale in West Knoxville, that's I-75, I-40. People forget it's also I-1 corridor that ends and comes in, was the second busy weigh scale nation. I mean, the volume of trucks that we have is incredible, but you have three huge corridors for shipping. When you look at I-1 corridor, Eastern D Ward, you got the I-40 corridor and the I-75 more south, they all come together. Uh, and so it, it is something that's critical.
Well, my interest is, is our pattern slides, since we stopped weighing in this area, is when slides occur.
Well, honestly, the, the weight of the trucks, it causes our slides on the mountain. It's the weight of the mountain. It's the weight of the mountain. Uh, our real challenge is with that, and I've got other slide, you, you may notice that on I-75 and the 144, I've got a contractor working inside of that project, puts a soil milling in. This last event that we had, obviously in the, some of the counties had big, big issues as well, but I had 52 slides on my route, 52. I'm somewhere north of $83 million statewide, probably in my region is about 65% of that. Uh, I still have more of my plan. It's hard to tell, tell everything that's happening because it's beginning to unravel slowly. When you look at a lot of our corridors, like I-75, uh, I-40 in Hawk County, uh, Roan Mountain, uh, Rockwood Mountain in Roan County. On a global scale, those are really large fields, really large slide. We've got age on our infrastructure. The techniques of the way a lot of those fields were built 70 years ago, 60 years ago are different than what we can do now. You've got material that can degrade over time, so that its values, strength goes down, and so we have vulnerability there. and so we have vulnerability there. Uh, we have a, a geodetic department that's always constantly evaluating those slopes and trying to remedy them. I'm probably going to have another large fix on I seventy-five near the one forty-four, I think, in the near future. Uh, we do have some movement in that section, that field going northbound, uh, right around there. Uh, Rockwood Mountain, how many people drive back towards the Nashville and you, how many times have you walked, how many times have we taken that video? Uh, I just put in a whole set of accelerometers, major things that measure that whole global slide. Uh, in this last, uh, three weeks during that time, some of that moved almost an inch. And we think an inch is not a lot, an inch on the mountain is a lot in three weeks. Uh, so we, we've got one active project we're just finishing up that was a temporary or an emergency stabilization, stabilization measure. And then we'll be following that with some large contracts on that mountain to be able to stabilize some areas that we, we are seeing some movement in it. Uh, I mean Dexter's and his staff just let you know, and they did an amazing job. I don't even have pictures of it, probably you've shown them, but State Route seventy and sixty-six over in August County, I don't know if y'all seen any pictures of that, uh, those slides. We were able to build it in and basically worked the whole weekend, did an emergency contract plans, whole set of plans together and bid out. We're probably looking at so far, we can put out on the street, uh, next, about this week, Friday's Friday, next Friday, somewhere around twelve or thirteen, we've laid up a contract, I've probably fixed and restored roads with my own people somewhere in the neighborhood, about twenty or twenty-five locations, and then I had other remediation general service contracts of about another ten locations. Uh, so it's been big, uh, very big. But to your point, it's, it, a lot, it's, it's really the mountain and the fields and just the age and, and water is our entity. I went through several years ago, slid line a lot of those pipes. Years ago, we've been in a lot of those, uh, large interstate jobs and fields, we've been coordinated metal, by the time, and obviously want to have some coordinated metal over time, get rest out and then obviously you get water in your slope. Water in your slope is a really bad thing. On Rockwood Mountain, uh, I have these deep wells that go way back in the mouth, some of them drain just horizontally and some of them actually pump water out of the mountain to keep it stable. Same thing, I have the same thing, if you go on, in Hock County on I forty, before you go into the gourds, I've got a section there, if you ever float down the river, rafting, you'll see these big pipes sticking out of retaining walls, look like battleship guns. It's actually drains that drain the mountain on the other side to keep it stable. That's all for information you have for a bit.
Back to this, um, so I received a letter in the mail from a company in Nashville, basically outlining the property that you'll always be trying to purchase once this was all, you know, with a nice little brochure and a colored map that says, this is what, you know, so call me and we can discuss what, you know. So where they got those plans, I mean, is that public info or is it just, do you all have, like Eric, like I live in the purple section, so do you have, like, a plan of what you may take for, like, slope enhancement or construction?
Sure.
Do you have that with you or?
Probably no, I have a piece. You want to give me, if we can work out time for us to give you that information.
Dexter, to add to that, Peres, what she's talking about, uh, are you all, uh, going to contact the residents in a timely fashion ahead of time? Because I know there's people in here that I've spoken to, that, that's very rare for them.
We're required to by law. We have a procedure that we have to follow, uh, that we have to do, the Uniform Act, it's federal act. And so when we start the process, we, we have to, we, it's a timely measurement, we have to, we have to be able to go and meet with you, we have to do the appraisals in a certain amount of time, they have to be reviewed, then we have to sit down and make offers, and then we have to negotiate those within a certain timeframe, obviously to make sure it's, it's fair and equitable issues as well. Uh, so yes, they, it, it will be, it'll be very timely. Nobody else is counting. I heard a guy from a little camp county high school, right off four and off. We actually, I think Ron's worked on this.
I asked Nathan to survey on it four months ago and he said we're qualified for improved.
We need a turn on the lane.
What is it, approaches too narrow there, when you turn in off sixty-three for boat traffic without three or four marinas out there and three or four boat ramps? It puts everybody in a bind there and they get off of sixty-three. We let several large trucks, tractors, trucks go over that bar going to the creek.
THP actually pulled somebody over for actually going to the side of the road and told them they would sign them next time. I got a call on that last one.
We're at the point where we might take something upon ourselves, try to do it.
I think, I think there's two things, part of it is the size of it and then the safety fence, like you said, there's not anything that drives it to where we're able to grab the safety fence.
We're looking at about twenty-five hundred vehicles fail on the ranch.
Steve, I talked to Steve Allen last week, about hundred range, about two or three years ago, he came up to us, stayed from Eaglemore all the way to hundred range.
Yeah.
And we lived at hundred range, we talked about putting a great big box of clothes and filling it in. And when you come off the highway, you turn in about, take a change of the vehicle.
Right.
I just talked to my speaker dad, he was getting aid from him and talking to me.
How many times has the guardrails been replaced or am I told you've been murdered?
I ain't your guy, what crap told that boy you were? I used to wait for the city dad.
But let me say, I appreciate you all coming. I know with DOD works for Minister Haller, it's become a commissioner, we have to work together. I know we keep asking for this and asking for that, the burden is, and I appreciate you all coming. We didn't really understand, a lot of citizens have been asking Lisa and just won't know when they say, oh, the commissioner should know. And sometimes you just don't, we really appreciate the county commissioner, she's always been kind. Anytime, and honestly guys, you know, I'm on the website, Dexter on the website, y'all ever had a question to pick me up? No, I haven't.
That is terrible, that the red light is terrible, it turns up next, that help and road goes out, you just did a project finish, that helped for me, so you get, you know, kids in there save their parents, you know, that, and we know that's a lot of money that the state's spending and it was needed and it was spent away. And I know these have to park play in it, the chances of this, but we appreciate any time you can give us.
Well, you know, that's what I'm looking, you know, it's, it's amazing, you know, coming through Dexter and through the father out there, uh, your volumes are a bunch of stuff on the interstate.
And there's no bypass?
There's, there's none. Well, you know, we're blessed, we're blessed to live, I think, in a new place in the world, happens and everything. That is a blessing, you know, when it comes to building roads, it's really expensive and there's not a lot of places to, to put another road. I mean, we, we put all our roads at the bottom of the valley and the, and the mountain and, and we live there. Uh, so it, it is one of the challenges, but...
I don't stay, this is not built our channel, but everybody's is, it's up at Co-Back when we get off. Who, who engineer that way? That, that was...
That depends on your county.
Yeah, because it actually, it fits the problem.
We're actually doing some more of those.
And I'd have said it never, first time, I said, this is crazy.
Well, he said the same thing.
I said the same thing. We did the second diverging diamond that was ever done in the U S, at Bessemer Street on Apple Highway. First time I ever saw it, I was the same way, I said, oh my gosh, we're going to be driving on the wrong side of the road. I'm an engineer, we drive on the right side of the road, not the left. Uh, worked incredible. So that's the, only the second interchange in the U S that was ever used as a diverging diamond. And just, just to show you, I mean, we try to be good stewards of what we do, we try to be very effective, we try to get projects on the ground as quick as possible. The original design for that thing was a bunch of flowers. And these flowers were going to take out most of the business, obviously on the side of the hills, you come back, it was going to cost like forty-five billion. It would have took me eight to ten years to get the contract to me, if I had the money. And, you know, you're buying up great property there and you add the right away costs are huge. We said in a parking lot in Smoky State, much of the leadership, the locals, commissioner and everything, laid this on the table, said, we can build this and if you all buy into this, and it won't, it will fix the problem, it won't back up on the interstate and you'll flush. The, the locals always had had to work that signal, they've not ever touched this, you know. We prayed, we sit on the hood of a car, part of this is because I didn't have to buy any ride. So it's a categorical exclusion when it comes to documents, which means nothing to anybody, it's, it's got a real big national document that takes me years to do. It's just a little bit of paperwork, it goes in and they approve it. Sit on the hood of a car and three years later, it's dropped.
Dixon, Bron?
And the, the good thing is about nine billion dollars. So you look at the difference in cost, much more effective, and so we're actually going to do one of those at Boon's Creek that's getting let, this way? Yeah, Boon's Creek, which is in Johnson City, up that way, and then Embry Road is one that I've got scheduled for too, at I seventy-five, to do that one with the diverging diamond because I can fix the queueing on the interstate and then I can flush Embry Road too. Yeah. But if you looked at it from up, the beginning with, it was like, and a lot of people, it was a lot of concern, a lot of people were worried about the right of the road.
Yes, I do. A lot of people don't remember that, that was a disaster.
I don't understand it, I don't understand.
Going up, when you're coming out of Pollard there, is the road going to be in the middle? Is it going to go on every side, certain side or what? Going up sixty-three?
Sixty-three, a lot of it goes to the, the one side. If you look at our right of way, we built the road on one side of it.
It's more on my side, it's over the left.
Yeah. I think it's on my side too.
The left, I think it's the left. Up to Old People's Bank, that's where I'm at, and I just wonder where you're going to be at for Mary. It's going to be getting any of that right there, my gas station, they got a new gas station fixing up.
We shouldn't buy any of your right of way.
I'm not on the line, I, I put my concrete, it's right on the line. And that's what I just want, if it's coming over on me anymore, if it's going to be in the middle or what?
We're looking as proud. We're looking as proud, the best thing for me to do is honestly, is we get your information and then we can, we can come up and meet with each other.
Well, I'm glad to see you coming too, I just wondered which, where it's going to be. I'll say into gas station, I'm married to Mary.
Well, where it comes up to, like, I live on the main road, where, where it comes up to, we don't smooth that out, you're just coming up two lanes, three lanes up the...
Three, four, three more lanes.
Three more lanes up. So what, how do you fix it at the end? Is, is go off, because the right of way comes within a hundred fifty foot of my house.
Uh, again, we're, we're hoping to, our plan is not buy the right of way, perhaps with your specific location.
Well, you would already be on the roundway.
We would already on the property, but I guess the slope, if we move closer to you, the slope would get steeper. I don't know how high the slope is at your house now, but...
Well, this, something like that, I don't think, pretty much about the slope.
The, the, the best thing for us to do, we'll be getting, the right of way process, we'll have agents and people that come to you, but honestly, if you have any questions, we'll, we're, we're open at any time. Give us a call, we'll go over your problems.
It's around thirty-five.
And I can give, and I, and I can send you drawings and stuff to look at as well.
Steve, look at these concrete, how they're parked, like that, when you go, ask you to drive.
It is. It, it, those are pretty accurate, matter of fact, those surveyors, we use those a lot of times, uh, because they're bored to earth, they actually make yourself pull. Yes, that's stuff we're on, they should be within a few inches.
They, they look for the C L, the yours, move the T L. I know that the right of way, the T L, I tried to drive it, I spoke to her one more time, she gave me a long answer, I'm sure she was like, Cindy, this is how they are. You wrote down a back lane, you want to do a back lane?
About a back lane. We did a, uh, green wave on the project in Harrogate.
Would you repeat that?
Yeah, there will be a, like, green wave on the project in Harrogate, three lanes each.
With the back lane or something?
No, I would say back lane, front, front, like the Cherry's path. Cherry's path, I think it's like two and a half feet wide.
You going to have anything down on our side, that all?
No. I don't think so. I don't think you need that. Anytime's the same, the stuff y'all already have.
With that parking stuff, yeah, it's great, it's beautiful.
These are interchange in the plan, probably interchange in Harrogate, twenty-five and six three?
No, no, it's going to be a red light control. There's, there's modifications and improvements to the intersection, yes, but there's not going to be an interchange there.
Steve, those red lights, uh, when they're in, are they set by timers at first? How does that going to work?
Well, actually they're set, they're two, two ways, you'll have actual weighted controls and they're actually sending cars, so that, that trips, that way you, the only way a main line, uh, turns red, then you don't have to be outside, so there'll be actual weighted controls and then they're set up on timing, basically as well as we said, optimizing, optimizing the intersection based on the traffic.
Are you, uh, doing it like the red light that big goes, or are you going to have cops come out beforehand like you did up there?
That's basically based upon whether it's a need based on visibility and stuff, so, yeah. Yeah.
Safety.
Yeah. On the mountain too, which y'all talked about, I seventy-five, I do have a fog zone project, discussing all that a little bit.
What kind of project?
Fog zone. Tell us the transportation, work on the fog zone because, you know, we do have a lot of problems with fog off in the period.
Well, we got a different one.
Uh, we didn't have that.
Steve, we, we had a transportation bill passed at federal level three years ago, maybe? We're, we're in the window either this year or next year to go back at it, right? Do you know exactly when that, is that one?
It is. It is next year. Next year we have a rescission too. A rescission needs to think, think money back from us.
Really?
Yeah. So if it doesn't pass, then we're subject to lose, uh, you know, somewhere five hundred to weigh, a hundred eighty, maybe, not that.
Well, um, we had, when the economy was bad seven or eight years ago, there was an engineering firm came out and just did a, a free job, uh, to nominate a U S scenic byway. And so got the U S scenic byway thirty-three going through Harrogate from North Carolina on up into Kentucky. And this nomination was from Harrogate all the way to Del Holla Lake. And so it would take in this road and connect to fifty-two in Scott County. We'd like to get that up front, but we, we knew it was dependent on a federal transportation bill, which didn't authorize any more scenic byways at that point in time, so we're going to try to put that one up front, hoping that we get a transportation bill in the next eighteen, twenty-four months and that they approve some more. Just, we'll be asking for your help to get some visibility on that too.
That's a very critical thing for us, is what happens at the federal level, because around, close to fifty percent of by program and, and, and Gerald program too, because it's a local that money, so a lot of them, they passes through, that's two, whoever set out, some states they keep it all, but then they hang off the streets. We passed a lot of that bill. So a lot of that funding that's federal passes through and without having a bill passed, we do face possible potential for rescission. The other thing is, is with us being an oddy bonding state, which we're proud of, but the other thing is we're depending on when that cash comes in, uh, we're pay as you go as long as we're waiting for that to come in and then sometimes you get into, they'll send it, but you don't have to spend it for you. So in other words, it can be at your account, but you can't draw any money off of it and they can wait months to do that. Whenever the government shutdown happened, you know, we were able to fund our bills for all our projects, but it did impact some landings and projects just because we had to wait till that money get to the account where we were. So that's a big deal as you work, as you, as you remember, so, uh, the federal side, we were at the end of the bash act, so we'll have to wait and see what they did. Something I'd like to reiterate though, is we talked about a rescission, a possible rescission, we're going to lose money. Some of the DOD has done historically, we did really well last year, is, uh, the way federal money works, is you spend it where you live, not every state, is it as aggressive as we are to spend our money. So ahead of the year, that redistribution of federal money, we are very aggressive to after it, the other states' money. Last year we brought in a hundred and seventeen million dollars.
Wow.
You do it not our tax dollars. Not our tax dollars, if they came from other states, that's all we have, spend somebody else's money.
Right. Other people's money is the best kind to spend.
But what, what, yeah, but for us to do that, we have to have our projects ready. They have to be, so we have, we work really hard to have more projects ready than we have money for. So if it happens, then that, I won't say we're shovel ready like ours, but you have to be able to say, yes, I can spend the money today. And we send that in, that was by far the largest amount that we ever have gotten.
Typically we're in between eighty and forty, you know, right?
But we got, yeah, whatever bit of that went into Tennessee projects, and that was money that came from other states that just didn't use their own. money that came from other states, that just didn't use their road. So.
I really hate to do this, because it's out of the subject, but just like Mayor Morton said about the scenic byway there in Harrogate, it's made, um, a lot of businesses have to take down their signs. Is that part of it? I mean, can they not have signs up that?
It's, there, there's regulations about signs, different things, I mean, I'm not the best person to ask, we do have an education about tables.
And I assumed you probably weren't the right ones, it's just, it's really hurting new businesses that have just started, that are out, out from the road.
Yeah, with the designation, it does come with some limitations on outdoor advertising, obviously billboards, and then also some signing, well, on permit signing. Uh, I don't have all those regulations in front of me. I used to know a lot of them, I don't know a lot of that anymore.
I really didn't think you were the one to ask, but I just wanted to make sure that it really was a rule.
Yeah. I can find out, again, if you want to contact me, I will get you any information that you need on it, and you, answer any of your questions. I can't remember things as good as I can.
Well, I wrote your name down, thank you.
Okay, well, I can give you back the card.
Oh, well, that's even better. I'll even leave you halfway. Because I'm a great commissioner, thank you.
Hey Steve, on that, I know you may not answer, can answer this question on her, uh, follow-up on Z. Is, you know, the state, uh, was restricted, a lot of people put signs out. Anyway, you know, somebody, fate with this widening of the roads, is that even going to make it a lot?
You just can't, well, I mean, as far as regulation of signs, you just can't put them on state roadway. Uh, if we own the property, you can't put a private sign on the roadway.
Elections.
Yeah.
Elections.
Elections, I don't know anything about that.
I, I'm out.
Yeah. But the other thing is, then there are some additional restrictions when you have outdoor advertising with billboards, uh, and a lot that has locals only to be involved in that,